Officially open the meeting.
The battery on my mouse quit while you were doing all that. So I it dumped me out, so I had to go get a battery, put it in the mouse, bring it back up. Kind of like of all times for it to happen.
Of course.
We're ready.
All right. I think whenever you're ready to call us to order.
I'm gonna call them and need to order. Yep, Akwara. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes of our March 4th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I will accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
There a second?
A second.
All all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carried. The minutes were approved unanimously. Library report.
All right. Well, as you know, we made the decision to close the library in the community center on as of March 17th. And the currently, the city hall building is mostly closed to the public unless people are coming in to listen to a public meeting. The closure is indefinite until we get communication from the state and from, you know, local public health that we can start relaxing some of those stay home, stay safe orders. Most of the members, the staff who are able to work from home, most of their duties have been asked to do so so that we can reduce the number of people in the library building. The rest of the staff is working in the building, observing social distancing and working staggered schedules. No staff has been laid off or had their hours cut due to the closure. We are continuing to select and purchase print materials. We shifted some of that that print budget to our ebook budget so that we can buy more ebooks while we're closed. We've also made a few small cuts to materials budget because the there's a general fund shortfall that we're looking at due to the because of the all the hotel rooms and vacation rentals closing. The city is expecting to lose about $600,000 a month in transient room tax. So everybody, all departments have been making the cuts that we can to this year, this current fiscal year, so that we can end the fiscal year with a healthy balance. And then we've identified places that we could potentially cut in the coming year if need be. So we're still selecting and ordering books. We've asked to distribute or fold them right now because I'm not in the library and I'm not able to do the cataloging. I do most of the cataloging of our print materials. So rather than just having them pile up, we decided it made sense to have them hang on to it for a while. We are buying additional library to go ebooks and downloadable audiobooks. Most of the ebooks, if you go on library to go, those are shared by everyone in the state. But these ones that we're purchasing, we're able to they're restricted only to Driftwood cardholders. So we usually go and we buy a few every month to help with long hold lists or books that the book club is reading, things like that. But now we've increased the number and the variety of the items that we're buying. As an example of this, the Oregon Battle of the Books list was recently released. And that's a school program where kids read books from a list of titles and then they compete in trivia contests about those books. So we went ahead and bought copies of those in ebook and some of them in audiobook if it wasn't too cross prohibitive. So that the kids who are interested in doing Oh Bob will be able to start reading the books. I've been in contact with some of the local teachers. One of them mentioned to me that her students were reading a lot of there's a there's a book series called Who Was? And then they extended it to What Was or What Is. So it's like Who Was Rosa Parks, you know, that kind of thing. They're young reader, nonfiction chapter books. So we bought a selection of those for the ebooks so that her students can continue reading those. We've been posting the titles that we add on Facebook and we've got extra links on our library Facebook page to the ebooks and other free ebook resources. Some of the companies have made some of their titles available for free during the pandemic. So when when we hear about stuff like that, we also post that information on the website. So right now, the only physical materials we're distributing are once a week on Fridays from noon to one. We Tina takes the van out to the packed meal pickup site for the school kids. And we have pre-packed bags of books for different age levels, including adults that that she distributes. Most of them are either from the Friends bookstore or from, you know, discarded items from the library. We're also stocking the little libraries that are still accessible. We're being very cautious about physical items because we're not sure how long the virus remains viable. But a lot of what people are saying is that it's 24 hours on cardboard and up to 72 hours on plastic. So we want to make sure that we're kind of quarantining those items before they go out. And then we're not really taking any items in right now because of the concerns about COVID being transmitted that way, especially for people who are handling large items of numbers or large numbers of items like the library staff are. We are issuing closure cards over the phone and on the website so that people don't who don't have a library card are able to get access to our ebooks and things like that. Those cards are gonna be good until we reopen. And then when we reopen, the patrons who are using those will need to show proof of address before they can continue to use them. Matt Vaiaki, he's our reference librarian. He's been providing technology and reference services over the phone and the email and Facebook messenger to help folks who need help. He told me he had 154 phone calls during the month of April. Library staff have been tally keeping a tally. They said they had about 165 phone calls during the month of April. So we're kind of tracking that. We've created a YouTube channel so that we can do some programming. We started out with Storytime and Tina Tina's recorded those. She's been doing some bilingual Storytimes with Jonathan, one of our staff members who speaks Spanish. And then Rachel taught herself video editing and has been working on editing those videos. And she recorded a video on cheesemaking, which is up on the YouTube site for to replace our adult science night program. And this week, she's going to be doing a video of on sourdough. Let's see. So last week, we had our first live program since the closure. We had a meeting of the book club that we could discuss The Tattooist of Auschwitz, which was our book club read for May. And we had 13 people there, which is a pretty nice turnout. We'll be meeting again on May 26th at four o'clock. We'll be discussing Vinegar Girl by Ann Tyler. Matt's been keeping the website updated and posting things on, you know, quality information on Facebook as well as resources for home learning, other valuable information. Plus, he's been doing these fun things on Facebook, like first person videos of different things. So it's like, you know, you get to be the first, you know, see what somebody sees if they're going down a ski hill
Yes, yeah.
Through the ruins at Machu Picchu and things like that. We are still planning on having summer reading. We've got a form set up on the website so people can sign in on the website and print out a copy of the reading log. And then we also, the foundation paid for us to get an ad in the Oregon Coast Today, which will be two pages. And, you know, one side will have the the reading log and there's information to register. And then we're also putting that as an insert in the news guard and we're putting packets in the local schools. We're putting it with the art supply bags that the Lincoln City Cultural Center is giving out. And Tina's talking to the grocery stores to see if maybe we can put like some stacks of those at the ends of the checkout counters as well. She's working on plans for at least one story walk as well. We think that might be a good way for people to get out and enjoy some socially distant fun. And then we're kind of still trying to figure out what kind of program, if any, we're going to programming, if any, we're going to be doing over the summer besides Storytime. I think it's probably likely that some of the performers might be able to offer video programs, things like that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else from the library side or the, you know, library programming. Oh, and I've been working with the foundation to, besides the advertising, we're also we also purchased some extra bins for the book drop. So that when we, because usually what we do is the bin, the book drop bin downstairs has a spring loaded bin inside it and we have two. So usually what we do is we take down the empty one and we take the full one upstairs and we unload it. So we bought two extra ones so that we can quarantine the items that have come back and not touch them for a couple of days before we start checking them in and things like that. I think that's all I have for the library report. Any questions?
I just have to commend you for the good job the library has done during this whole mess.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's true.
Well thought out. I thought your closure cards were a really neat idea.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have any questions? Kirsten?
No, but do you think you might find out that quarantining the books and stuff maybe? Because they've said now that like you buy stuff from the grocery store and you don't have to clean it, that they found that it's it's not given to other people or spread by
Yeah.
picking up things at the grocery or so that would be very similar to a library book.
Yeah, yeah. And we're kind of hoping the there's a national IMLF, the Institute of Museum and Library Science, is actually using some of their funding to do some testing and things like that specifically with library material. We're really hoping to get that information within the next week or two and that will also, you know, help shape some of our decisions. Because if it's just, you know, don't have, you know, physical contact with patrons, then that's much easier than also having to worry about the, you know, potential potentially transmitting the books.
Right, right. And also be able to, I think you're gonna get a lot of library books back at one time when you open it. And then you'll just have tons and tons of things sitting around that you can't think you can't touch.
Yeah, yeah.
Found out that you could clean them and put them back up or whatever.
Yeah, we're really hoping to get some good news from some of those studies. Most studies in the past have shown that books are not a very good vector for transmitting disease. Like if you test them, you can find germs and viruses on them. But it's the likelihood of someone catching something from it is very unlikely. But there's so many unknowns about just how transmissible this is.
Thank you. February statistics.
Okay. So February was one of the busiest Februaries we have ever had. We had 9,995 visitors to the library. So we that's an average of 43 visits per hour. We also had 1,370 internet sessions. 79 children, 19 and 192 adults attended programs during February. Meeting rooms were used 45 times. And we issued 82 new cards. Circulation was 13,094, which is actually significantly lower than the previous February. But I'm kind of thinking that some of that, especially given how high the foot traffic was, that may be a knock on effect from the ILS being down at the end of January, beginning of February, that some of the circulations didn't really get counted. Yeah, I don't know if there are specific numbers people want to look at in the reports themselves.
I'm fine with doing it on the screen. How's everybody else?
Yeah, just fine.
Okay. So this just shows our our circulation. This is a little bit more detail on on circulation. And this over at the 11%, that shows that that's down from the previous year. You know, and if I continue to see trends like that, then I'll be looking at comparing not just the previous year, but also other years to see what, you know, if there's something going on there that we don't understand. Adult circulation is still our biggest driver. Our juvenile circulation is not terribly high. I'm hoping that, you know, as we reopen, we can start doing some more outreach to get more kids cards. And I think that still a lot of parents check out items for their child rather than their child having their own card. Books are still our biggest circulating item. And so this is our library to go circulation for February and we had 884. And this in April, we had, I don't have the April reports, all the April reports yet, but I believe it was over 1,300. So almost double. And then moving on to March.
Okay, March?
Yes. We, like I said, we closed the public on the 17th. So of course, our our numbers are not what they would be. But prior to that, we were shaping up to have a pretty busy month. We had 5,378 visits between March 1st and March 17th, which is an average of 41 visits per hour. And I think it's notable to bring up that this is even during when people were being encouraged to stay home and practice social distancing, we our foot traffic was still very high, which definitely played into some of the decision to to close entirely. We don't, I don't have the statistics on newly issued cards complete yet. And we're not quite sure how to track program attendance. If it's something like a video that we put on the website and then people watch it. We're not sure if we can just count, you know, number of views as program attendance or how the state library would like us to to track that.
I'm surprised at how many outside groups have to have meetings at our library. It's kind of like
No, I didn't realize some groups.
This little old town of Lincoln City, you know?
Yeah, we, because we make our meeting rooms available to nonprofits at no cost. We have a lot of groups and that's gone up in the past year because of the hospital closure. A lot of the groups that were making use of meeting room space at the hospital like Al-Anon, you know, some of the other support groups and things like that have been using the library.
So some of these groups are having more than one meeting in a month. It's not 45 necessarily, 45 separate.
It's not necessarily 45 separate groups. A number of them have weekly meetings or once a month or bimonthly, things like that. So really, it should be 22 uses of the meeting room by outside groups rather than 22 outside groups because we don't know how many of those are the same group using it multiple times. And unless folks really want to look at the the reports in great detail, I thought maybe I could just scroll past those. One thing I think is kind of fun is when you look at the patron type, it really shows that kids like to use the the self-check machine. This bottom number here, it says Driftwood Self-Check under Juvenile. That's a lot of kids love to self-check.
What is this ill out and ill?
Interlibrary Loan Out. And then Interlibrary Loan In are the, so when the the things that say ILL out, those are the books that we're sending to other libraries in outside of ocean books. So, you know, somebody in Multnomah County wants to use one of our books. And we did see an increase in March over February for library to go with 976 checkout. And then for April, the our percentage of checkouts was about 25% of the checkouts for the consortium. So that's with, you know, Tillamook, Newport, and then on. And then this is the just tracking which of our items or how many of our items were loaned out to the other consortium libraries and how many were borrowed from them.
Now, those are all still just on hold wherever they went. They're just sitting there?
Yes, yep. Right now, they're all just kind of chilling out on the hold shelf, waiting to be picked up someday.
Okay, nothing's been moving back and forth since you closed?
Nope, we haven't been doing courier service at all. We're going, we've done it, the courier for the county has done a couple of runs just to help with items that had kind of piled up. But we're not, you know, holds and things like that, people can still place holds, but we're not actually going and filling the holds right now. That'll it'll be probably be a while before we're able to do that again. And that's all I have for the statistical report.
All right, thank you. All business, the budget.
Yes. So I had our budget committee, the budget committee looked at the library budget on Monday evening. And our budget was, my budget was very flat from as compared to last year. I think we had an increase of about $372 over the previous year. So no big, you know, that didn't really raise any alarm bells. I did discover that I had forgotten to budget for gas. So it's probably actually gonna be more like $600 more than the previous year. But I I have to figure out what I should be budgeting for gas for the library van. So I was, I think I was talking earlier about making some cuts to this year's budget. The biggest has been we had a space planning consultant that we'd budgeted for. And I had already kind of figured out with things getting canceled due to COVID and stuff like that, that we probably weren't going to be able to find somebody to come in this fiscal year. So we went ahead and just canceled that. So that was $5,000. And then we had a lot of travel and training that were can trainings that were canceled because no one, the Oregon Library Association Conference was canceled, a lot of other things were canceled. So we had some funds to kind of put back into the pot there. I've earmarked some I some areas where purchases could be delayed or cut from next year's budget if the current lodging closure continues. Once again, travel and training is kind of an easier one to make some cuts to because we know that there's not gonna be any big conferences for quite a while. And then we are going to sort of, no money's gonna be coming out of the budget, but I am going to backload our print purchasing. So for the first few months until we see really where we're at, we're not gonna be spending quite as much on print books. At least, especially if we're not really quite ready to start circulating print items. I'm hoping that by July, we will be circulating print items again. And then, you know, everything else, I have to say, is a little bit up in the air. We're looking at financial, you know, Ron is meeting with the the finance director to look at financial projections and start making all kinds of plans depending on worst case scenarios. But as far as the budget committee is concerned, we're asking them to look at the budget as we have created it.
Are any of those cuts having to do with that ebook purchasing problem that we talked about way back, the Macmillan, was it?
Oh, no, actually, Macmillan, they they got rid of their their strictures on sales to libraries. They got rid of that. I think they signaled, they said it was because of the the COVID-19 emergency. I think that it just wasn't working out well for them as a public, you know, in terms of public relations. I don't know if they might try to reinstate it later on, but they decided to make a goodwill gesture and we we took it, so.
COVID can cover up a whole lot of errors in the last few months, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I I think they they knew how much of a public relations disaster it had already been. And then once libraries were in a position where they're starting to buy more ebooks, it was just a really bad look for them to be trying to restrict that.
Absolutely. Everybody's on the computer now. I mean, ebooks may be all we have, yeah.
There was an interesting comment made by one of the budget committee members. She asked if we had security cameras in the library because she'd heard that there were child molesters and drug dealers in the library. I told her that, you know, we we do have security cameras and we work closely with the police on any issues that arise. I wasn't aware of any specific issues pertaining to what she was describing that we'd been able to confirm, but, you know. It was a, it was an interesting comment to make. I think I kind of know where some of it may have come from, scuttlebutt. But there aren't, it's not a, there's not a massive drug dealing in the library problem.
Where are the, what are the cameras facing? I mean, what part of the library are you?
At this point, we have cameras that cover basically all the public areas of the library. We have cameras in the children's room, in the meeting rooms. And then also, we have ones that point down each sort of aisle in the back. Yeah, it covers the DVD area, the window wall, the reading room. Really, the only place that we don't have cameras is in the staff area. And we have used them in the past to help with some theft issues. And then we've worked with the police if we need, if they needed help identifying somebody who was, you know, a bad actor who went into the library kind of thing. But, yeah, they've been, they've been a useful tool for us, especially when, you know, in the evenings and on weekends when we have fewer staff, we can pull up the security cameras at the front desk and kind of use those. If we know that there's like a group in the community room or a large group in the children's room, we can kind of keep an eye on that without having to have a physical presence down there.
Yeah, good idea. Which reminds me again of another thing. You talked about setting up something down there at the at that open area where the book sale is, like tables, coffee, something like that. Does anything come from that?
Well, right now, there would, there would be some capital expenses involved with that because I think we would need to redo the floor down there with tile or something like that. And we've been asked to put any capital expenses on hold. So I don't see a full renovation of that area happening this fiscal year. But I am working with the foundation and the Friends to maybe purchase some different or additional furniture for the library. What we'd like to do is, we did have all of the upholstery in the library cleaned while we're closed. But we're looking at replacing a lot of the big fabric couches, maybe with more like armchairs that have a, there's ones you can get that are pretty cool. They've got like an attached lap desk that you, you know, laptop desk that you can swing up.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that that would, things like that, I think, would be a somewhat better use of space than the big couches because normally, maybe one or two people sit on the couches and they're very large and heavy to move around.
Oh, right.
We're looking at kind of more modular furniture, things that can be, you know, reconfigured depending on what you want to be using the space for. Things like that.
Yeah, good idea, yeah.
Okay, thank you. New business, the draft of your stage return to businesses.
Yes, yes. So this is, I I, you know, I said this in the the packet. I want to again emphasize that this is very much a draft. It doesn't have It doesn't have any real benchmarks attached to it, like when do we go to which stage, things like that, but it's to give us an idea of how we might structure reopening. So we're basically at stage one right now. Some staff are working at home, some staff are working in the library. We're doing what we can virtually with reference and programming and things like that. And then we'd probably be looking to, at moving to stage two and then stage three fairly, in fairly quick succession. You know, things like if we're going to start doing curbside, I want to be back in the library and able to catalog the books before we move on to stage three, which would be either curbside or some kind of delivery sort of thing. Reopening the book drop when we know that it's safe to do so. Then moving on, we would have all the staff transitioning. We've worked with the city to, we purchased some news guards that we're going to install at the service desk. We are talking about possibly, at least at first, having the stacks closed and still have people just come in basically pick up their, their holds of their other materials. You know, we're going to want to have some lines on the carpeting so that we can remind people to stay six feet away, things like that. We're also looking at figuring out things like at the service desk, shields for the computers and the phone, you know, alternative things with the phones so that when staff are using those, they can then clean them before the next staff person moves in. It's pretty hard to sanitize a computer, so that's something that we're thinking about. We're looking, we're looking at reopening interlibrary loan when we know that the statewide courier is running again, that's the biggest one. We do some interlibrary loan through the mail, but that's a smaller portion of it. And then moving out of the next stage, we would have it open to the public, provided that we have figured out ways to keep everything clean and we have sufficient supplies to do so. We're probably going to start with limited hours so that we have the ability to clean, do more cleaning in between. And we'll probably limit the, the number of people allowed inside at one time. We're also thinking that we would want to, at least at first, not have the seating and the toys and things like that in the children's area and have limited seating in the reading room just to help encourage that, that social distancing. And then the stage after that would be that we are able to restore the seating to the library, we're open for browsing, but we don't have any programs or meeting room, or meeting room use. And then finally, this last stage would be restoring all of our typical library programs.
Is this a statewide opening designated by the governor or is this just all the libraries have gotten together and figured this out?
This is something that I put together based on other, what other libraries' stage plans were looking, looking like. So it's, you know, we're kind of all sort of converging on the same concepts, but, you know, some people, depending on the layout and how large your building is, things like that, you know, everybody's doing, going to be doing things a little bit differently. But this pretty much mirrors what a lot of other libraries in the States are planning on doing.
Thank you. Good job.
Sure.
Any further questions from Krista? Any comments from board members that don't apply to the agenda? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Good seeing you all.
Good to see you. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm glad that this worked out okay. And I'm hoping that someday soon we'll be able to see each other in person. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, and end the meeting.
Okay.
So that, oh, stop sharing there. Well, go ahead and end the meeting and then I'll let IP know that they can stop the recording.
Okay. We'll meet next month, right?
Yes, the date for next month's meeting will be, let me just pull up my calendar. What's next month? Next month is June?
Early June.
June 3rd, yes. So June 3rd at 3:30. And for now, we plan on doing it via Zoom unless we're told otherwise.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Bye-bye.
Nice seeing you all.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.